This meeting of the school board for Monday, May 20th.
May?
Monday, April 22nd has been ordered. First on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the Oath of Office for Rick Mullen and Mike Pierce.
I have an oath of office for each of you, and if whichever one wants to go first is to read your oath of office and then turn one copy into me.
Hi, Rick Mullen, having been elected to the office of Board.
He's going to leave right now.
Hi, Rick Mullen, having been elected to the office of Board of Education for the School District of Milton, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And Michael Pierce, have been elected to the office of the Board of Education of the School District of Milton, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge those duties of officials to the best of my ability.
Tom, would you like to say a few words?
Is Mr. Berwick here?
He is not, we're going to do that at the end.
Okay, I'll pull it because I think he needs to.
And the next item on the agenda is the election of Board Officers and CISA II Delegates.
I would like to nominate Joe Martin for the position of President.
Joe, do you accept the position as President? Or nomination?
Yes. I'd like to nominate Karen Hall as for position of President.
Yes, I will accept the nomination. Are there any more nominations for President? Any more nominations for President? Any more nominations for President? Not hearing any, I would call for a motion to close the nominations.
So?
Second?
Second.
The nominations for Presidents are now closed. I think we'll do a paper ballot.
Okay. Hey, now I just want to confirm, do they have to sign their names or just put the name of the candidate that they choose?
This is the only time when they would be able to do a secret ballot.
Secret ballot.
But they're not required to do a secret ballot, they can't. So they should make a decision now as to whether this is going to be just a paper ballot that they sign or a secret ballot they don't sign.
Secret ballot? And that's when we don't sign, correct? Is everybody okay with just a secret ballot?
Yeah, I'm fine.
You, Rick. Pass them down that way?
Okay.
We have four votes for Joe Martin and three for Karen, so Joe is elected President.
Okay, I now call open nominations for the position of Board Vice President.
I nominate Karen Hall for Board Vice President.
Karen, do you accept?
Yes.
Are there other nominations for Vice President of Board? Third and final call, are there any other nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education of Milton? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Karen as Vice President.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Diamond, seconded by Rick. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Karen is our Vice President. I believe in order we're going Clerk next, so I will now declare open the nominations for Clerk of the Board of Education. I would like to nominate Diamond McKenna. Diamond, do you accept?
Yes.
Diamond accepts. Are there other nominations for Clerk for the Board of Education? Third and final call for nominations for Clerk for the Board of Education. Hearing none, I would entertain another motion to close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Diamond McKenna as Clerk for the Board of Education.
So moved.
Motion by Rick.
Second.
Seconded by Karen. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations. And our last office officially, I guess, is our Treasurer, and I would now declare open nominations for the Office of Treasurer for the Board.
I nominate Mike Pierce for Treasurer.
Mike, do you accept?
Yep.
Mike accepts. Are there other nominations for Treasurer for the Board of Education? Third and final call for nominations for Treasurer. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to close and cast a unanimous ballot for Mike Pierce as our Board Treasurer.
So moved.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
Seconded by Rick. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Pierce, you are continuing your duties as Treasurer. And lastly, I believe we have to elect our CISA II Delegate, correct? Okay, I will open the nominations for CISA II Delegate.
I nominate Tom Westrick as our CISA II Delegate.
Accept that, Tom? Tom accepts. Are there other nominations for the CISA II Delegate? Third and final call for nominations to be our representative to the CISA Board. Hearing none, I will need a motion to cast the, or to close nominations and cast the unanimous ballot for Tom Westrick as our CISA II Representative.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Diamond, seconded by Karen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Westrick is our CISA II Delegate. And I believe that concludes our elections for the evening. Next on the agenda is action on the agenda. Mr. Schneider, are there any changes to our agenda?
There are no changes.
Hearing none, I'll need a motion to approve the agenda as it is presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Diamond.
Second.
Seconded by Rick. You want to get in minutes right there.
He's sworn in, he can go now.
The agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our agenda is as presented and stated. Next, we have action on the minutes. Those are typically enclosed with our Board packets, if anyone needed to review them or chose to. At your leisure, we will entertain a motion to approve those as distributed. Just to bring up, Mr. Martin, these two meetings, one was for the 15th. That's a good clarification, thank you. We will approve the minutes for both meetings then with a joint motion, if that's your pleasure. I make motion to read some of the minutes as presented for both the April 8th and April 15th and 19th. Motion by Tom to accept minutes from both April 8th and April 15th meetings, is there a second?
Second.
Karen? Karen, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the minutes are approved. And next, Mr. Pierce, we have vouchers presented to us as is typical.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve vouchers totaling $278,173.63 as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Mike and seconded by Diamond to approve the vouchers as presented to us for $278,173.63. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion clearly passes. Next, we have public participation, and I do not have the sheet, are there any folks that would like to speak?
There was no one signed up on me.
No one signed up. Anyone want to say anything quick? If not, we will move along. Thank you. Student Council report.
At the high school tomorrow, we have ACT Aspire testing for underclassmen. Upperclassmen either get the day off, or if they're taking an AP test, they have the choice to participate in AP test review, which is a very nice thing our school does. And in student council news, we are beginning the nomination process for our officers.
How about you, Miles, is that all good?
That's all. Not a lot.
Thank you, we certainly appreciate it. Legislative update is on our agenda, but the absence of Mr. Brueck, I don't know there's an awful lot we know about that, so you may peruse right beyond that. Next, there's reports and updates. Referendum update, Dr. Schneider, do you have anything to share with us?
Yes, with the, very, very big thank you to the community for supporting the referendum in April 2nd, and we've begun the work, as you know, our last being the approval of having Mike Huffman and Associates join us as our owner's rep. Last week, we began the work with JP Collin and PRA, with our building administrators, to start talking about the schematic design phase, which is, in essence, is looking at the drawings that were, we've been looking at for the last number of months, and starting to have the conversations about, okay, so do we have this? We need to start just looking at it, is this the best place for it? Just the initial conversation, initial meetings with PRA, JP Collin, Mike Huffman, and Steve, who's here as well, Clayman, who's a part of the Mike Huffman team, and our building principals. And so last week, met with our K3 team, as well as with the middle school. Today, there was a meeting with the high school staff, as well as a tour for some of our newer members, Mike Huffman and Steve, with the tour of the building, again, kind of layout, again, this is their first look at some things. And so what we're doing is, the initial piece, is to just start the conversations about that kind of where the boxes go, for example, the pool and that kind of stuff, just the initial conversations. What will happen is, over the course of each couple of weeks, every month, we'll have an update as to where we're at, there'll be an official approval of the schematic design before we get in the design development phase, before we get to the construction phase. So the board will be involved quite a bit throughout this, but today and this past week were just the initial conversations of, okay, it's the first time our architects and JP Collin working with our building principals and with a successive referendum, and so now that's the initial conversation. I did meet with Mike and Steve from Huffman to talk about the communication, and so we're putting together what the communication to the Board and the community will be on a regular basis. We're probably looking at it on a monthly basis, where you have an update of the progress going on, updated numbers, as well as pictures. And so we just started kind of mapping through that initial, just what the template would look like that we would share also with the community and put on our website, that was just the initial conversation today, and they showed me some templates of what they've done with other projects. It seemed exactly what I believed the board would be looking for, but what we'll do is we'll put something together, show it at our next meeting, and see what you think, and then make sure this is the information you're looking for. But there, as we're again just talking about the schematics right now, about what's going in the boxes, that, and again, it won't be much different than what we've talked about for months, but now it's kind of like, oh, you know, we need to start having those conversations, and we're starting with the buildings individually, and we'll share that out with you at our next meeting. So today, this week was just the initial, getting to know each other from this level. So no decisions made, nothing was put in stone, nothing like that at all at this point, just the initial conversation with PRA, JP Collin, and our building administrators.
Questions from anybody?
As we get going and it starts to be a little more than just the intro, and more decisions are happening and more things happening, can we have it, an update communication in every board meeting?
Absolutely.
Other than just once a month?
Yep.
Any other question at all? Okay, and we'll move along to the update on the Facility Use Agreement with Premier Tennis. And who's going to help us through that?
In, I'll have Jerry speak to this. There's a memo in the packet.
Thank you, there is a memo in your packet, and in March, when the weather was much less nice than it is today, we were looking at the options for the boys tennis team, we were not sure whether or not we were going to be able to use the courts at Central Park, the ice and snow on them, and the cracks that we've had in them in the past, there was some uncertainty there. So the Board gave us the okay to negotiate an arrangement with Premier Tennis and Fitness Center. We did do that agreement, we put it together, and speaking with Athletic and Activities Director Brian Hamel, we are no longer going to need to execute that agreement, the courts are in playable condition for this year. We are doing as we have in the past, renting the Premier Tennis and Fitness Center, I believe we actually have a boys tennis team player here with us today. And so they are using that on an as-needed basis, but the estimated fiscal impact of that is about $3,500 this year, and so that's about $4,000 less than the negotiated agreement would be if we were to use it all the time. So this is an informational update, there's really no Board action necessary, but just wanted to follow up from where we were in March to where we are now, and that agreement will no longer be necessary to execute, as it is indicated in the memo, if for some reason the tennis courts continue to deteriorate rapidly, we at least now have a template for a right-to-use agreement that we need in the future.
Very good, thank you. And moving along, our next item on the agenda is a presentation by Susan Probst.
Thank you for allowing us to talk to you a little bit about our AODA team that was created. There's really three reasons why we want to present this to you, one is to inform you about the topic and how important it is to us, secondly is to make you aware of how critical it is that we spent some time focusing on this, but also the challenges that we have in the district and in the community. And then finally, to continue to get your support in helping us refine the process that we have in place to support kids from 4K all the way on up. I think a lot of times when you think of AODA, you think this is only a high school challenge, and the work to prevent AODA use is, certainly starts much earlier than that. And then also to look at what do we need to do to expand to support our students and our families. With me tonight, who's going to do the bulk of the presentation, is Tara Huber, who is our Associate Principal at the high school, and also the MECA's Administrator. We have Berlin Orr, who is our social worker at the middle school and the high school, and Michelle Carrillo, who is one of our high school counselors.
Hello. I'm going to go over some of the realities in our district as of right now. We have a couple of different sources of data that we use to look at these different issues every year, and this year we, last year and this year, we really started to dig into some of the things that we felt like we were seeing a lot more of recently. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey is given to all of our students in the district, 6th through 12th grade. There's varying questions at varying levels. This data that we're using tonight, and there's just a few points because there's hundreds of different questions. This data tonight is from the 17-18 school year, so they took that about last spring in 2018. We did take it again this school year because DPI wants us to do it all together, every school district, and there was a rotation in years past, but our students generally take it every other year. Districts have some choice in some of the questions that they can ask, and some of the questions vary from 6th graders to 9th through 12th graders. Most of the data that we have tonight is from 9th through 12th grade, because they asked much more specific questions having to do with ATODA issues. So some of the data here, almost a quarter of our students said that they have vaped in the last 30 days. Vaping has become, when I started as Assistant Principal in 2014, I think that we had our first code violation for vaping, so this is in the last five years or so that vaping and e-cigarettes have become something that we're dealing with. Students who have used marijuana in the last 30 days jumped from 7% to 8% in 9th grade to 28, 29% in 12th grade, and this is students reporting this, so this is a self-reflection. 95% of our Milton students report that their parents disapprove of cigarette smoking, 95% of prescription drug use outside of what they're prescribed, 85% of marijuana, 82% of drinking. Milton is about 13% higher than the state average on students who admit on this survey to using vapes or e-cigarettes in the last 30 days or so. So what we're seeing in our buildings, at MHS during the 17-18 school year, so the same school year that this survey was taken, we had 29 tobacco, or our code for tobacco is the same, whether it's cigarettes, vapes, e-cigarettes, any of those devices, and five drug violations. During the 18-19 school year, as of March 1st, we've had 19 of those tobacco violations and six drug violations. 50% of our athletic violations in the past five years have been for e-cigs or vaping, and about 60% this school year alone, just for athletic violations. And then some middle school data during the 18-19 school year, again, as of March 1st, there were four tobacco and five drug violations. So just some of the things that we're dealing with here at the high school, middle school, and even into Northside. Part of this, the next two, or actually three slides, Officer Schneider put together, he is our School Resource Officer, and he sent this out to our teaching staff and also our parents. I would call these older versions of the vape pens that we are seeing now. They're much more, they're much smaller now, and much more, much easier to conceal. These are the former vape pens when I first started, these are the more recent vape pens that we're finding now on students. So the cartridges look much like a, well, they plug into the USB elbit of your computer or any, any computer USB, and that's how they charge. And then the Juul is the most popular one that we are finding, and it's just that small thin vape pen. So concealed rather easily. The next slide, which you can go through if you want to, is just, we have a lot of conversations with parents and students who just don't have a lot of information on vaping and the effects of it. Many times you'll hear that it's not, not harmful, so we go over these kinds of things with our students and our parents all the time. Again, I think he sent this out to parents and our staff members, just to, just trying to educate. So lots of harmful things, and I think we probably won't know the extent of the harm of vaping for a long time as research develops on it.
Okay, so some of the proactive measures that we're taking as a school district is in the elementary grades, they are doing some things in their guidance lessons, there's the second step curriculum. At the middle and high school, really the bulk of where some of those proactive measures are coming out of health classes. And one of the things that we've been looking at is health, I think they're getting it 7th, 8th, and 9th grade, but after that, there's no other kind of venue for getting those proactive measures out to high school students. So, and then obviously, as student services, as at the school counselors, we're, we'll help to coordinate services with outside providers and parents, and if students need more elaborate services, but in terms of the educating them on certain things, I think we're probably, that's one place where we don't have a big enough venue at this point. And then the reactive measures, some of the things that we're doing when we know these things are happening, all of the school counselors at the high school were, did a small training on the teen intervene. That is a brief treatment that we have done with some students who were suspended, or maybe prior to the last couple of years that maybe were expelled, as one of their measures to get back into school. It's a brief therapy, it's three sessions, the third one you try to get their parents to come in on. So that's one measure that we're using, and then obviously, we're doing one-on-one things with students, either their request, parent request, referring to outside services. The other reactive measure has been school suspension or possible fines.
So some of the next steps we'd like to take, and please don't view this as a comprehensive, well-deep, laid-out, detailed plan, it's just some of the, the points that we thought were obvious as things that we should picture, that we intend to do over the summer or next school year. So Dr. Schneider did call the formation of a district ATODA committee, and it consists of Board of Administrators, student services, teacher from next step, and just looking at what, where have we been, what are we currently doing, what are some things we need to do. We used DPI-recommended tool to kind of look at that, it's the AODA Prevention Program Assessment, and one of the things that calls for is a review of the curriculum every two years, so that's something we're going to take on next school year, looking at the curriculum that's being used for best practice, does it have current information, does it have recommended scope and sequence and multiple, multi-instructional strategies. Continue to look at the different gaps that exist in the six different domains of that assessment, including continuing education of our staff and parents, that should have been put on there, so I apologize for that. One of those examples, we had the Hidden and Plain Site that was available tonight, we also did that at parent-teachers conference, both here at the high school and middle school in February. Also want to re, reform, resurrect whatever we're doing, use the Milton Youth Coalition. I've been talking to individuals about being part of that, and I invite anybody here, if you're interested in being part of that. We're one of the few communities in Rock County that doesn't have an active coalition, and by having that, we can get in partnership with other resources, like the Rock County Prevention Network, and that's where representatives from the various coalitions meet together, and they share resources, share information. For example, I just learned tonight, they just got a federal grant to look at educating about the risk of vaping. And so by getting our youth coalition active again, that will open up more resources to us. We did just submit on Friday a grant to DPI for a .3 ATODA coordinator, that would be 10 to 12 hours a week. Why .3? Because that's the maximum what we could apply for, given our student population, but if we're successful in getting that, they would help lead through, give a real focused effort on, on this process. We're approaching this like, using the three-tier triangle, like was used often at education, RTI, PIS, where the universal level Tier 1 should meet the needs of 70 to 80% of their students. And so as Mrs. Carrillo mentioned, or Mrs. Huber, about the real change in rates from our 9th to 12th grade, we need to continue talking about it, because if the adults aren't having conversations about it, by, that and the school staff, parents, then the kids are going to get their information from other peers, and then that's the message that everybody's doing this, so continue, continue doing it. So that's some of the efforts that we intend to do next year for Tier 1. Tier 2 and Tier 3 are those students who have indicated, maybe they're, have started using, maybe they're considering using, maybe a little more at risk of using because of use in their family, or for a variety of other reasons. And so just looking at that whole process of how are we helping those that we, that we know maybe have, have started down that path. That advertisement that always grant, nobody intends to be an addict, and we've got our students here, captive audience, that we could be continuing to get them information and help. I want to look at that process of self-referral. Number of years back, before I was in the district, Mr. Bill Horton could attest that there was a strong student assistance program, the state law and policy, is that students can seek confidential help for alcohol and drug issues without fear of, if they self-refer, without fear of being penalized for athletics, and that still exists, but we don't do a good enough job, I don't think, right now of making students aware of that. So that would be a piece of just continuing to educate parents and students that that could be available. And then looking at the whole process of what happens when a student does self-refer or is caught either a student code, maybe it's a community violation, we learn of it, or, you know, an athletic code. or, you know, an athletic code violation. What are we as student services doing, what is the administration doing, are we asking the right questions, are we using evidence-based interventions? And we think, starting in particular, usually you start Tier One, get your foundation solid, and then going on to Tier Two, for those that have a, a code violation, whether it be student code or athletic code, that we have a good educational and support system ready, ready for those. Any questions?
I do have one. Do we have any data that, that talks about the violation of e-cigarettes, has that led to harder drugs or suspensions or expulsions? Are they too early to tell from the data that we have?
I can't cite specific data, I think the data is out there for years, that, that pot smoking and alcohol use and tobacco are those gateway substances. The piece that really, which is why we highlighted that in the first screen, of students are saying, "My parents strongly would not approve of me smoking," but yet some parents aren't viewing the e-cigarettes in the same way. So, I think because it's new, some of that long-term research hasn't necessarily happened with the e-cigarettes and Juulie. But there's ongoing research coming out, you know, all the time with that.
Thank you.
Corolla and I just have, just two questions. The first one is, do we know why we are so much higher than the state average?
I don't.
Okay. And then, do we know why the Milton Youth Coalition dissolved?
It didn't, I don't know if it actually dissolved, it just kind of became inactive, from my understanding of it. People that were kind of leading it went into other positions, and they had, you know, taken a real strong, very effective approach to the anti-bullying that was known throughout the community, and were kind of looking at other, and really, I shouldn't be answering this because I wasn't part of it, but that's, that's my understanding of that, summary of that discussion.
Okay, thank you.
So, we're currently seeking, I would say, students and parents to be, be part of that.
I just had one quick question. Do we share any of that data with folks outside of this room? I was, I think like maybe some of you, my jaw dropped when I saw 28% of our seniors have used pot in the last 30 days. That number staggered me.
Yeah, I think that's one thing that we've discussed, is that we haven't necessarily done a good job of, of educating that. We give the surveys, we have the data, but then what do we do with that data? And that's a piece that, you know, we've had some discuss, if you're going to give the surveys and use the data indeed to make it useful. And that's a piece, again, of just keeping the conversation going, educating, how do you do that to, you know, that people will hear it, that students will hear it, parents will hear it? That's an ongoing conversation. So, have they, are they aware now? I don't know. And by the last one presenting, you get the question.
We, we have shared data in the past, and it's not, we do not have a, at the high school, and we have shared YRBS data with parents in the past, and we don't have a normal method to do that. And that's part of the reason for putting this together tonight was to, and doing the Hidden and Plain Site was to start a conversation about it.
Jeremy, was there any, did it seem to help, I guess, once that data was shared?
You know, there's, there's questions, a lot of this is, it's just, it's educating parents, it's, with the vaping, that is something we really, it is the Juuling, it's the last two years where it's, and if you talk to any high school principal in the state, the Juuling has, has been an epidemic. I meet with the Badger Conference High School Principals every month, it's the number one item that we bring up all the time, and this, I think it'd be, you know, while the, the percent of vaping is higher than Wisconsin, it's not off par with the rest of our conference in this area, and, and in county schools as well. It's something that we are still getting a hold of, of how to communicate with parents. That's why some of the communication that we've sent home is about how to recognize these. And I know several of you have stopped in to see the, the Hidden and Plain Site display tonight, we've sent some information home to parents to show them what to look for. We're still getting a hold, that's part of what the ATODA Committee is doing, is how do we actively work with parents, help them understand.
If I could just add to that, the YRBS isn't just about AODA issues, so it talks about suicide and anxiety and depression, and certainly those, those numbers are shared all the way down through Northside, and that information with the administration and student services, there's different supports put into place to try to educate families, but also to wrap around with the kids when they're in our buildings. We look at data as, over multiple years, to see where we're having rises of numbers, and then try to figure out how do we align our student services curriculum and our relationship building with kids, so that they feel connected to school and see us as a resource for them when they might be getting a different message someplace else. So, I don't want you to think that we don't ever do anything with YRBS, because there's a lot of information that we have done.
Oh, no, two things are also very interconnected.
Yes.
The three things are very interconnected, but like Joe, I was kind of blown out of the water when I saw that 29% of our 12th graders have used marijuana in the last 30 days. I don't know why, I should be shocked by that, but I am. Because it doesn't happen in Milton, does it?
Well, your question of, does it help, I mean, one of the things we looked at is that historically Milton's rates have been slightly lower than the average in Rock County, but when we looked at that, like, so we had the coalition in place, we had the student assistance program in place, there was sending out the YRBS data, and we're not yet to that point where I would say like, we're, you know, like, oh, we're so, you know, much worse than any of the other communities, but anecdotally, we're seeing, and the data showing a little bit of creep, creeping up, and we don't want to get there.
Right.
You know, we want to get back to doing some of the good things that, we were still doing good things, but want to enhance that.
Get some of those things in place.
When we look back to our, when the Milton Youth Coalition was started, we were looking at the data, and we thought for sure it'd be some of the AODA issues, and it was actually bullying. And so, the orange signs around the community that we started with as administrators, city leaders, police departments, we looked at tackling bullying, because that was the, that was the item that was really on the rise, and not that the other things weren't as important, it's just they had to pick something, and we put our efforts into the bullying piece, and as we look at the data continue, and yes, we have not completely stomped out bullying, it's definitely better than it was, meaning the rates are lower than they were, but there are other things that are, again, rising up, and to early point, we need to revisit what our actions are as a youth population and kind of get that ramped up again, because when we did ramp that up, we did see a downturn in what we focused on.
When we did the survey, did they ask the questions like, why they chose to participate in an activity or where they're doing it, was, was that any of the questions asked?
Not in the YRBS. Just asked, well, they phrase them in different, you know, variety of different ways, but some of them are, like, in the last 30 days, have you, you know, the rate also of have you ridden in a car in the last 30 days with someone who has been drinking or has been smoking marijuana. You know, I mean, those were just a few of data points that I think are important to look at, because those numbers were staggering to me, too. So, it's, it doesn't get at necessarily the whys, that's the work, I think, of a community to, to sift through that.
I think moving, at least for me, moving forward with this, I would like to see this maybe shared out with most North, maybe middle school, high school parents, because I know it certainly started some conversations in our, in our home about, you know, what do you do with your friends when they maybe have been drinking and you're not, or you're in a situation where it just doesn't seem right, what, you know, what do you do? Do you get in that car, do you walk home, do you just stay there, do you find somebody else? And that conversation at our house has been, you call home, and I don't care what time it is. And we have some friends that have said the same thing, you don't get a hold of mom and dad, you call me, and I don't care what time it is. But I think we can't, because parents can't have that conversation until we know this is going on, because we are all, oh, it's not my kids doing that, and it is. 28% of your children are doing this.
Very good, thank you. Donking information. Next on our agenda, Mr. Westrik, Chair of Human Resources Committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. We met on April 18th. We have seven items on the agenda. The first one is the discussion on Next Step regarding potential insurance provider consolidation and clinic model options. We have talked with a representative, Elieger from Associates for quite some time now, and Chris, if you'd like to kind of do a brief historical narrative of where we're at, and how we got there, and what our potential Next Steps could be.
Absolutely. The Benefits Advisory Group has met since November of 2018 to talk about benefits that the HR Committee are looking to potentially make changes to. That is actually a span of time, so that would be looking for the 1920 year, 2021 year, or, and going on to the third year, 2122. So, there's quite some time that we're just kind of spanning out, and like I said, we had a meeting in November, January, February, and in April as well.
And just a reminder that any discussion right now is not going to affect the members for next year, if we're known to rule.
Correct, and that's coming up here on the, the report, but with our current update, we are talking, we had talked with Al Jaeger from Associated, and our next steps are to create a subcommittee to work over the summertime to prepare and research positive negatives for each provider system clinic offering. So, what does Dean offer, what does Mercy offer, and then also looking at the positive negatives of consolidation as well, from two providers, whether that's consolidating to Mercy or consolidating to Dean. And then, we're going to be bringing back into the month of September to the Benefits Advisory Group, coming back together and saying, this is the research we found, and then presenting it in a report to the Board of Education.
Any questions from the X committee about A and E? Thank you, Chris, for filling two birds with one stone.
Tom, can I, or the update on the contract and letter of employment timeline? That was in your board packets about the timeframe of the teacher contracts, administrative contracts, as well as support staff, letters of employment, and letters of requisition. Based off of the board meeting this evening, is how that timeline will play out. It's a very tight window, and we're looking to make sure that we have everything in the employees' hands by May 15th, state of state statutes.
Okay, any questions about the timeline? Okay, thank you. Moving on, that's one, the discussion of possible action on the 2019-22 Support Staff Compensation. Again, we, we talked about this in the HR Committee, and go ahead, Chris.
Sure, there is a memo that was in your board packet, I'm sorry, not board packet, that was sent out, that the HR Committee had drafted, and then it went on to the full board, and that was talking about the support staff, supervisor, administrator, and the potential benefit changes. And if any of those committee members would like to talk about, or the last committee meeting?
The, the first possible action on support staff, and the Human Resources Committee recommends a cool, like, 3% wage increase, and one of the reasons that we decided to go with 3% is that this is usually, the support staff, a little bit lower in compensation than teachers and things, so we felt that a 3% increase would be appropriate for them. And with that, I would make a motion that we accept the recommendation from the Human Resources Committee in approving a 3% wage increase for all support staff effective July 1st.
We will call the motion by Tom, the second by Mike. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just, Tom, if you could, can you just kind of summarize, there's another memo with like five different options, and I think that goes through with like the support staff option of different percentages, and administrators, options of different percentages.
Right, right now we're talking just about support staff.
Right.
And there were different options on, whether it's 3%, 2%, 1%, or 0.
Right.
And it was the recommendation from the Human Resources Committee to.
So, there's no, are you saying that in the HR base, in their opinion, that there's really no pros or cons to going to a different percentage of the other options?
I think it goes to our philosophy that we want to keep and retain our balance of choice, and that's more of the, Chris?
Jerry can speak to that memo as well that we presented.
Thank you, Chris. The objective of the memo was to put together what the potential fiscal impact of those decisions might be on the overall budget development, so those options aren't options in isolation, those were just options that we put together, and as the memo outlines a little later on, that we could certainly come up with other scenarios. The three categories of employees that we looked at in the forecast by budget development model were support staff, our licensed teachers, and then the administrative staff. And so, those estimated fiscal impacts are just that, a lot of it will often depend on exactly how many of each position that we have going into the 2019, 2020 school year, so they are estimates. But again, the concepts were discussed at length in the Human Resources Committee with the end goal of the Human Resources Committee to put forth the recommendations that are here before you tonight.
The memo has different scenarios, the option one is what's in the budgeted model and planned for any, anything less than that, obviously shaves off, right now we have a structural deficit projected, but that's without our enrollment, state aid, and valuations, and so, but the option one is what's in the budget model right now, and so when you see the projected structural deficit, that's the, the 1.1, then it obviously decreases if you look at, at changing percentages. But anyway, that's what's in the model currently, and again, we're still waiting for the three licensed bar stool to come in, which don't come in, and as you know, until the summer.
And the 1.1, that was, that number was arrived prior to the referendum being passed, correct?
That is correct.
So, right there, there's, there's 400,000.
Yeah, much of the pool, you know, half of the pool piece is going to come off, and so there's others that will obviously change, and this is, when we project, remember, our model, we project that all, since the staffing is our biggest piece to our, our expenditure side of the pie, we budget or forecast every position at full capacity, meaning there's someone in that position all year, and for the benefit-eligible positions, we forecast that they take the family plan. So, again, we're trying to be as conservative on the expenditure side, or I guess, because like worst-case scenario on the expenditure side, and so, yes, that number typically will come down, because we do not have all our positions filled 100% of the time for the entire year. But we wanted to give you what our current projected model is, again, now with the referendum passing, half of that pool expenditure will come off, or.
One point of clarification, it was 1.5 before, so the, the pool piece is now out, but the rest, all of the salary calculations that were done by Deborah and her staff, that, that 1.1 is at that scenario as you see in the memo. So, that part is, the pool part is out.
So, I just wanted, when we discussed this, Brian, at committee level, we looked at it based on option one was what was budgeted, so we weren't going any worse than what we'd already anticipated. We asked the questions of, at this time in the year, are we normally, or in the past, have we shown a structural deficit to start off at this time? And we have, so it wasn't, like, the situation that we're looking at isn't grossly out of the norm, it's still an alarming, you know, number to look at, but with the recent culture issue that we've been facing in the district, our strategic plan of retaining and attracting great staff, we didn't see how we could do anything but give them what we anticipated in our budget. So, that's the big, the big conversational points that got us there.
I've always liked to help support staff all as much as possible, because they get less pay, and so I, that's what we're talking about right now, and I was the advocate, I have a 3%, I always, you know, they're, they're the ones in the trenches. It's all that.
Anything else on the way in before we vote? All right, we will vote on the motion on the table, on the floor, I'm sorry, and. We will vote on the motion on the table, on the floor, I'm sorry, and the roll call vote. And any more? We're going to start on my right with Mike.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Joe is yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Seven zero, motion passes.
Okay. The next item, discussion on possible action on supervisor and administrative compensation. And again, we went through the same exercise, and the budget of the month was a 2% for not only the supervisors but for the administrators as well.
And Tom, on the memo, are there two separate items?
Okay. So we'll talk about the supervisors first then. Can we do it with one motion or we need two?
With one motion, if you'd like to. Someone may vote, go to separate.
Okay. Well, we'll start with one motion. If there's any objections, we can switch the voices. But with that, I would make a motion that, per the recommendation of the Human Resources Committee, to offer supervisor and administrative compensation increase of 2%.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that motion?
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions. So when we're talking about supervisor and administrative compensation, what is the status of the phone stipends? And the reason why I ask this is because last year in our, in our close session meeting back in January, part of, as everybody knows, part of the things that we talked about was the 40-60% change in the retirement benefits severance. But one of the things that was also discussed and proved was that the phone stipends were to be actually added to the administrative contracts, and they weren't supposed to get those phone stipends anymore, although they still continue to get them. So I'm just wondering, for this, this particular motion, how does the phone stipends play? Are they still receiving those? Is that the intent? Or is the intent to correct it the way it was intended?
Brian, I can answer that question. The supervisors and administrators are different on that, whereas the administrators had that put towards their contract like you had mentioned. So the supervisors right now, some of them have phone stipends, depending on what that rule is. So right now, no administrators have phone stipends that I'm aware of, but the, some of the supervisors do. Or the district, on the district cellphone, will pick up the cost of a cellphone for supervisor instead of paying them a phone stipend.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. And then the next question I have is, is the, are we voting on all administrative compensation? So all 24 supervisors and administration? Are we approving all 24 contracts? Is that the?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I ask, in no fault of Dr. Schager, but does it make sense to approve a 2% increase when we haven't even done his performance evaluation? I mean, typically, compensation follows performance evaluations.
We're in the process of doing the evaluation. This is, is not specific for any one administrator. It's for administrators overall as a group.
Right, but you're lumping Dr. Schager in with that. And my question is, is it right to approve that with Dr. Schager, his contract in there when we haven't given him his evaluation yet?
Do we know if the other administrators have their evaluations done yet?
Well, they should, I would imagine, because that is the responsibility of the superintendent, right?
Correct.
So they should, do they have their evaluations done as well?
So that's, that's a twofold question. Some of the supervisors are, their, theirs is done by some of the admin team. So, and then the district admin office is evaluated by the superintendent. So the superintendent does not evaluate all of the supervisors and all the administrators. There's a split there.
Yeah, so I guess my question would be, are all the people that we're approving the compensation for, do they all have their evaluations completed?
Well, actually, Dr. Schager didn't.
Right. Other than Dr. Schager. Because you made, you just made the comment that the other administrators don't have their evaluations completed either. I'm just asking. Oh, I'm sorry, I must have misunderstood.
Brian, I can speak to the supervisor evals. Those are, each year, right around this springtime, the supervisors, like for example, Stephen Shantz, who worked with Building and Grounds Department. Mike Gostek would work with, with the interim, Mike Gostek would work with his nutrition team people. For HR, I evaluate Sue McCarthy and Chris Watson. So that is done right about now, that they're working on that before the end of the year, before the end of the school year, so that that feedback is had before they leave for the summertime.
Okay, so if I, I just want to make sure I understand.
Of course.
We are being asked to approve contracts prior to many performance evaluations being complete.
No, we're not approving contracts.
Well, compensation.
We're approving increase in compensation. It's nothing to do with contracts.
Okay, so what you, this is good because you're making sure I got this clear. So we, if we agree to approve this, then what we're playing, what we're agreeing to is, is in good faith, we believe we would, everything, you know, being, you know, everything coming out great, and the best case scenario, we're approving that we'll go up to a 2% increase, but that may not necessarily mean everybody gets 2%.
And Brian, I can speak to that as well, too. Right now, when you review that and you say that there's a 2% for the administrative and supervisor group, that gives me the go-ahead to start working on what those dollar amounts look like. And on the May 13th, I'll be providing you with a list of 18, 19 salaries, 19, 20 projected salaries, as well as the difference. So you can double-check that and then approve it at that time. Right now, I'm just conferring with Shayna really quick. If you wanted to wait on the superintendent's eval, you could pull out Tim's and then look at the other 23 individuals.
So I want to make sure I understand what you just said. So if we approve this, that means you're going to go forward and put the dollar values in, in the contracts, and we would approve those, but all those dollar values would be a straight 2% across the board?
That is correct. And I would have that for you to review and approve on the March 13th, I'm sorry, May 13th board meeting.
So if somebody has a bad evaluation, they're still going to get 2% versus somebody who has a great evaluation?
And when those kind of evaluations come up, administration deals with those kind of situations with employees. We work through them from an HR standpoint, as well as from a building administration or a district office administration. We work on that to address those problems.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
So then the other thing I have, and I know we're not dealing with contracts, but I don't know if this is the right time to talk about this or not, because it may affect percentages and everything, but there's a lot of, a lot of things and recommendations that came forward from the two, from the two investigations that we have actually had conducted. And a lot of, a lot of it is based on contractual recommendations as what to change, and as a board, we have actually gone through and implemented any of those. And I guess my question is, because based on the timeline, we would approve contracts on the next board meeting, right?
The May 13th, correct.
Is that going to be enough time for us to talk about how stipends and how things outside of contracts are going to work? Because one of the recommendations is to potentially put anything that is considered outside of contract, put it in the contract so people know what happens when those type of things happen. We probably don't have to talk about this tonight because we're just talking about 2%. But two weeks is in a lot of time to get that kind of information together. And I think, I think our administration team, you know, they're hardworking, and I think they deserve to know kind of what the rules of the game are before they actually sign contracts.
And that is a conversation that we need to have later, but that's not what the motion is tonight.
Yeah, I guess my, I just recommend that we have it soon before the 13th.
Okay. Anybody else on the motion on the floor for the 2% increase for supervisor and administrators?
I just want to re, relook at what I said in the first discussion. When we went through as a committee and evaluated each of these in budget, we very strongly have taken into account the things that have recently happened. We sat down with the administrative team not too long ago and listened to the things that they had to say. And, you know, just to remember that it's part of our strategic plan to, you know, retain our staff, and part of that is, you know, evaluating this process. Brian, I understand where you're leery at the same time. It's no different than we just passed the support staff. They, we want to keep our great administrators here. We want to encourage people to be part of our district, and it's, we should look at it the same way as what we just approved in the last motion.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I can comment I could make, Diamond, and I appreciate, I appreciate what you said. And, you know, I do believe that we do need to keep our talented staff, but at the same time, I don't think that we should also repeat, you know, errors and mistakes that we've made in the past. And that's what I'm trying to prevent.
Okay. You will roll call vote again to my left. Rick?
Yes.
Diamond?
Yes.
Joe is yes? Karen?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Mike. Motion passes, seven zero. Thank you.
Okay. Item E, we already talked about, Chris?
Yes, correct. It's at the end of that memo.
And so moving on to F is the timelines and negotiations for the MEA. And we do have a meeting scheduled on this Wednesday, April 24th, at 4:15.
That is correct, the district office.
Okay, the district office. And that'll be the HR committee. We'll talk with the MEA about our people. The last item is a timeline for superintendent evaluation. The administration has completed their, they have turned them in. We, as a board, will go over those on May 13th. And then at that point, the board will do their evaluation after we get the input from the administration. And then we will get those compiled, we'll sit down again, and we will take all the information we have and then come up with a formal evaluation to put it out there. Okay. And Mr. President, that includes my report.
Thank you so, so much. That's a lengthy report, but it's that time of year when that stuff is all perfect.
Joe, before we close that, I, Tom, I know it was very briefly discussed that number that letter E was, but I don't know if, I don't think we were prepared for it. So I just want to make sure that the people that are here, because of letter E, that they know that at committee level, when we talked about changes for insurance, that that wasn't, we decided not to do anything this year with that. And that the stuff that we talked about at the former meeting about changing the rates and things like that, we did pull back on completely relieving everything as status quo. I don't know if that was truly put out there that way. So I just want to make sure we clarify that.
Very good. And we will roll on to new business, action on 2018-19 open enrollment alternative applications.
Give the report in your packet there, and there are two students applying to Jane's phone. Open and roll to Jane's phone.
Two out, zero in. Any motion to approve that?
I make a motion, I make a motion to accept the open enrollment alternative applications as presented.
I'll second that. Moved by Karen and seconded by Tom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Ms. Lanius, staffing report. Chris, can we do that one?
No.
All right.
You should have the staffing report in your, your document. And you have the updated version of how we're going to go put it out there for you. Hopefully, this is, meets what you're looking for, and you'll, you'll notice the various types of contractual letters, et cetera. And then on this one, there will be, now that we know who our president and clerk are, I will ask for state insurers tonight on this document. We'll do that every time we approve the staffing report.
Indeed. You've all got it in front of you. And once again, I applaud the changes. I think they're much, much easier for us to understand what's, what's in front of us.
I just have a question, though. I noticed on the attachments, are you, okay, so the attachments that are referenced on the third page are the first, page one and two? Is that correct?
Karen, actually, they are in your board packet, but they're only for you to see because you're looking at actual contracts. You're looking at actual letters to the board about retirement, resignation, things like that. So they're in your executive notes.
I looked at the entire page on the right-hand side.
No worries, because it's definitely no way of doing things. I totally get it.
And again, this is, this is a lot more information than we, than we have been supplying in the past, so. It's one of the recommendations that came out from the investigation, so we're already starting the process.
And again, kudos, Chris. I really do like this new staffing report very much.
Thank you. Any motion to approve it? Somebody?
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Karen. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes for staffing report. Action on gifts and donations.
I'd like to make a motion to approve $16,677.34.
Second.
I think you misread it, Mike, but 16, 677.34. I think that's it.
I got 31.
Do you? My turnabout has 34. Regardless, we're grateful for the 3 cents and the $16,000 that's ahead of it. Wonderful community support that we are very, very appreciative of. Motion to approve it, or approve the motion for Mike?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Gifts received with gratitude. Meeting dates. Dr. Schager?
This coming Wednesday, we have our negotiations in the MEA, 4:15 in the district office. We will be looking at some point to set up another HR committee meeting. And then we do have our next school board meeting on May 13th, 6:30 here.
Okay. And we are going to divert from the, well, not divert from the agenda, but we're going to take a little break before we talk about executive session. There's a young man that crawled in the back of the room wearing blue. I want him to come up here.
I just want to say, you missed the call in the second inning. No, I could have. Probably got home in sharp, but Kim sent me a text, they said, you'll be here at 7:15. And when my wife tells me to be here at 7:15, I'm there. So I didn't want to, so I probably could have made it, but I didn't want to, I didn't want to hold anybody up, so I came, and this is who I am. And I just want to thank you that, you know, I was a young teacher here in 1979, was when I started here in Milton. And I think that was, might have been one of my first students. And it was my fourth year of teaching. And to think now, it's 2019, I've been here, a part of Milton School District for almost 40 years, and I hope Mr. Billhammer let me come back and sub this fall so I can get 40 years in. I'd like to be five decades in Milton. And it's just been enjoyable. And I always was going to come to Milton, get my master's degree at Whitewater, and go back home. Well, this is home. I couldn't go back because this became home because of all of you in this room. I mean, every one of you have touched me in some way or another. another, and I couldn't think of going anywhere else but being here in Milton, and so, I want to thank you, all of you here, for whether you agree with me in everything I do, or disagree with me, that's part of what, when you get elected to office, we can't ignore everything, so, but I'm so proud that I've been here for 40 years, so, thank you guys for all your support.
We got a couple people that have a little something to say, we're not going to make it a roast, per se, but I would just start, and I was a student in this building when Don started, and I think I could share a lot of stories, and some of you have known Don as long as I would have funny stories, too, but lots of you know Don from his influence in our sporting world, and I've been a very, very huge part of our Milton rec and sports scene for a long time, he's a pretty doggone good history and social studies teacher, too, just in case you didn't happen to know that, but I'll let the board, and I would just say, thanks, Don, I can call you a friend, a colleague, a teacher, a mentor, you filled a lot of roles for me, and it's a pleasure to work with you.
Oh, Joe, I can do the same, fortunate thing is, I didn't have you for history, I just know who you were, so it made me stay longer.
If I may, Don, you said you've been in the district for 40 years, it seems like you've been here longer than that, you served three years on the board, you were in city council for four years, served in assembly since 2016, as Joe said, very active in the community, different communities, and doing things that always benefited the kids and the community, with two things that you can take to the bank with Don Bruink, one is that he's going to do what's best for kids by improving programming and facilities, and the second thing is, he's never going to pass up a photo op. And I think if I were him, I would, I would not pass it up either, because he just doesn't seem to age, he still has the dark hair, and I think, see Beth is not here, right?
No, she doesn't like this.
Okay, I just would like to thank Beth and Craig for, excuse me, for sharing you for the board.
And I just want to thank Beth, I hope she's listening at home, but, you know, she's spent a lot of nights alone with me, going, you know, coaching, you know, the high school teams, they're gone a lot, missed a lot of nights in city council, missed a lot of nights at this, and I couldn't do it without her support, so, you know, they all, you know, she has, you have a willing partner to be able to do things for the community, and she certainly has been that, so I, and I certainly appreciate that, if you're listening, I certainly appreciate that.
And it's been my pleasure to serve you as well.
Well, for all of you there, it's been my pleasure, like I said, every time I do something, I get to know people, and it adds to, to me, because all of them bring something that I enjoy, and so that's why I do these things, because knowing people, getting to know people is an important part of my life, and so I want to thank all of you for your service there, too.
So, Don, in anticipation of tonight's meeting, I've spent time thinking about Don Bruink, not that many years ago, I really didn't know who Don was, other than the fact he was a long-term Milton High School teacher and a coach, basically, he was just a name to me in the community, it was about that time that Don retired from full-time teaching and began to invest himself in the broader community that I became acquainted with him. I have now had the opportunity to work with Don, with you, in a wide variety of capacities, one of which was serving on the Board of Education, my experiences with Don clearly demonstrated to me that he is so much more than a name, I decided to make a list of the values that come to mind when I consider Don, you might have your own list, mine goes like this, calm, thoughtful, knowledgeable, values-driven, kind, compassionate, unassuming, no facades, an advocate for kids, a champion for Milton, and a truly dedicated leader. Don, I recently ran across this quote, "The greatest gift you can give someone is your time, because when you give your time, you are giving a portion of your life that you will never get back." Don Bruink has invested countless hours in the school district of Milton, the students, the staff members, community members, and those of us who have had the privilege of serving with him, while Don may not get those hours back, all of us will, for a long, long time.
Just so we don't turn it into a roast, we're going to call it good there, and happy school district and community of Milton, Don, congrats, and don be a student.
We'll break down, have some cake, I've planned a cake for everybody, and then you can smell about, and congratulate Don, so we'll just take a short break now before we go to the close session.
Recession, in the school sense.